So just item one is the public hearing. Okay. You ready? Okay. Okay. Welcome to the Sanford Planning Board meeting for June 6, 2022. It is July, isn't it?
Yes.
I could have said 2020. That's the last time we were here. Welcome to -- this is July. Boy, I'm out of practice. This is July 6, 2022 meeting. This meeting will come to order. This is a public proceeding unless the board specifically votes during executive session. You have the right to hear everything that is being said and look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you're unable to see or hear something. Please note that if any planning board members have any potential conflicts of interest, of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the chair will ask for proponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents and those who are neither for nor against, but who may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go to and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The chair may wait until after the testimony has concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that any rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, et cetera, will not be tolerated. If these behaviors occur, the chair at his discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule it for another day. In addition, the chair at his discretion will limit repetitious comments. It was entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments. Then the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impacts of a project in light of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shore land, or zoning ordinances, or other relevant regulations. After the board votes on the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of fact. Since the findings may substantially affect any appeal rights and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attend the meeting, not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the planning board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to repeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within 30 days. City's ordinances and comprehensive plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in the Planning and Development Department's office at 919 Main Street in Sanford. Remember, this is a public hearing. You have the right to see and hear what is happening, and we welcome public participation. Okay. And as I say, it's nice to be back here in council chambers since, first time since March of 2020. I guess we can take a roll call for attendance. Do we need to do that here, or?
Nope. Everybody can, you know, we could just indicate who's here if you want, or you can indicate that we've got five members in attendance.
I guess we, okay, we can just say we have five members in attendance, and Crystal is expected to arrive shortly. And I believe Oliver is aware of the meeting, but he hasn't shown yet, so. I've not seen him on Zoom either. Okay. All right. No minutes for this meeting. First item, hearings in business. Under new business, we have a proposed ordinance amendment. This is in regards to the front yard setback and private ways in the urban zone. Beth, do you have any background for us on this?
Yes. So the planning board has discussed the proposed amendment of the urban zone at work sessions on June 1 and June 15. And based on a direction from the city attorney, as well as comments from the work session, I have revised the document a bit. It looks an awful lot longer. And the reason for that is that the city attorney pointed out that we had both the terms lot and parcel in the ordinance, and that I thought that they were pretty interchangeable, but apparently there are some legal distinctions in those two terms. And so what I've done here, you'll see, as you scan through most of this, that I've simply changed the word parcel to lot. So that's what a lot, pardon the pun there, that's what a lot of the additional changes are. Beyond that, I've added a definition of lot or parcel. He recommended that I put back in the language about what you do if you don't have nine lots to do the calculation on. And so you'll see, I just added a phrase that made it clear, I hope. And then, let's see. I think those were the majority of the changes. When you get into the public hearing, I do have some testimony from the fire marshal that I'd like to read into the record. So, I'm sorry, I did have this sort of laid out. So there's some general editing, as I said, changing parcel to lot, revising the section numbering, standardizing a few terms where we use them and they've been phrased differently, adding that definition, revising the definition of uniform setback relationship to include a provision about what to do when there were less than, fewer than nine lots. He also directed me to relocate that second paragraph that we had in the definition. He said it was a standard, didn't belong in the definitions. I would agree with him. And so what you'll see is that I've moved that reference into each of the zoning districts that reference uniform setback relationships. Deleted the section on the current building and design standards for side and rear yard setbacks in the urban zone. This is just a mistake that Jamie and I picked up, so we're proposing at this point in time, since we're in that section, to just eliminate it. And then adjusting the text of the standards for private way to clarify the reference to residential uses as described in the table of land uses. The attorney wanted to put an elaborate or a more lengthy description of what that was, and I pointed out to him that we already classify various uses under a residential category in land use tables, so we just came up with that. Anyway, that's kind of it. I know that Becca LaPierre is here this evening. She will be testifying, I believe. As I said, I don't believe Kara Wilber will be here. She just had some personal family stuff that came up and got in the way of her attending, but, you know, she, you heard from her at the last work session. And as I said, I do have that testimony from the fire marshal.
All right, very good. I guess we can open up the public hearing at this point, and if there's anybody who wants to speak in favor of these changes. No comment, I guess.
No, Becca's raising her hand.
Okay, yeah, Becca, go ahead.
Yeah, I just would like to speak in regards to the ordinance change with private ways. I think, I'm in favor of this change. I think this is a good way for us to be able to try and get some more new housing stock here in the city. As we all know, that between single-family homes and multifamily homes, there is a pretty big shortage of housing stock all over the state. And so I think this is a nice little tool here and a good way for us to be able to open that door for new opportunities here. So, that's all I have to really say.
Thank you. Okay, nobody else to speak for? Anybody to speak against the proposed changes? All right, seeing none. Any comments, either for nor against, general comments? Okay. I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Can I read the fire marshal's?
Before we do that, yeah, let's do the fire marshal's comments.
Okay. And, and so I received this yesterday, right after I had sent out the packet, you know, the additions to the packet to you. It's dated June 30, 2022, although it didn't get to me until yesterday, which was the 5th of July, entitled Urban Zone Private Ways to the City of Sanford Planning Board and Planning Director Beth Della Valley. Dear Planning Board, I am deeply concerned about the proposed changes to city ordinance 280-16-7-20.1. Having 10 homes on a private way is very dangerous due to the lack of room for fire apparatus. As it is written, it is also against the Fire Code NFPA 1201, 2018 ED edition, sorry, requires that roads are at least 20 feet wide, NFPA 2017. The private road standard in the city of Sanford is 16 feet wide. This is not enough, especially in winter here in Maine. Also, with 10 homes in the urban zone on a private way, the homes will be built closer together. This will increase the threat of fire moving from one home to another, especially with the wind that Sanford has at certain times of the year. We saw this happen on Island Ave when four buildings caught fire. It was a five alarm fire, and two of the buildings had to be torn down. As that authority having jurisdiction within Sanford, I propose the following additions to the ordinance 280-16-20. This will make the requirements clear for any developers coming into the city and proposing similar projects. He has two proposals. All homes will have a fire sprinkler installed to NFPA 13D standard, and fire hydrants will be installed every 600 feet. The cost of these improvements will be offset because the developer will be able to maximize the density and have more homes on a smaller piece of land, therefore reducing their per square footage land cost. Thank you for your time in this matter, Patrick Cotters, Stanford Fire Marshal. And then, I'm sorry, I didn't get the back page. You may not have either. It includes citations for the work, the references that he are, the material that he's saying. When you're ready, I do have a proposed response to his concerns.
Sure. Okay, no other comment. I'll declare the public hearing closed. And we can have discussion with the planning board. Do I have any comments on this or questions?
So he's talking about fire hydrants every 600 feet. What if there's no town water there?
Well, in the urban zone, more likely than not, you're going to have access to public water and sewer, and they'd never be able to get those, you know, those additional units without having some sort of public services. So you can go that way. My concern is that what Patrick is proposing is too rigid, because nobody is saying you're going to have 10 units. You could have five. And I don't know that the Fire Code has the same standard when you've got five units as you have 10. And so what I'm going to suggest is a more flexible, context-sensitive solution. So if you actually look at the wording of 280-16-7.20.3.8.3, which is the next, that's on the last page. Okay. It says right now, the width of the right of way is at, these are one of the, the planning, the planning board may allow up to 10, so I'm going back to line six for a moment. Up to 10 residential units in the urban zone if the planning board finds that the private way is in conformance with the following standards. The first one is that the private way has to have gone through formal planning board review and approval as a private way. The second is that the private way is paved. And the third one, and this is the one that I'm suggesting you could modify to have a more flexible responsive standard based upon the conditions, the specific conditions. Right now, it says that the board can say that the width of the right of way is adequate, make sure that the width of the right of way is adequate to ensure that there's adequate area to accommodate necessary drainage and other improvements, address topographic conditions, ensure safe disposal of stormwater, provide adequate widths of travel lanes to serve anticipated traffic, restrict on-street parking, et cetera. If the planning board determines that the right of way needs to be expanded to address these conditions, it may require up to a 50-foot right of way. And then all other standards will be in conformance. What I would suggest happen here is that in lines 16 through 21, those various conditions that we simply add a reference to the fact that the buildings may be required to be sprinkled, and the planning board may require additional hydrants. That will allow more flexibility depending upon what the specific conditions are, as well as what the specific proposal is. And the thing that I would point out is that private way approval and subdivision approval are going to have to be permitted, and the fire marshal will be involved in review of those projects. And so at any point in that process, we start with a pre-application meeting. I would, and Patrick is always invited to those meetings, and 99% of the time attends them, and if he doesn't, then we direct the applicant to go meet personally with the fire marshal. At that point in time, they would be put on notice, oh, you're proposing 10 buildings. We have a requirement in the Fire Code, you have a minimum 20-foot right of way. So they would have to increase the size of the right of way to 20 feet.
So actually, the way the code, the Fire Code is written, it has nothing to do with density?
No.
It's, it's, "Fire department access road shall have an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet."
That's right.
So it's almost like we shouldn't have 16-foot roads?
Well, the Fire Code is a national Fire Code. This is a local ordinance. We can be more restrictive than the Fire Code. We cannot be less restrictive and still maintain our insurance ratings.
But we are less, oh, sorry.
Say it again?
We are being less restrictive if we are lessening the requirement.
Yeah, we won't be lessening them. 16 is what the requirement is. What this provision says is that you can increase the requirement from 16 feet to, say, 20 feet if what they're proposing is a tenant unit.
What I'm saying is the ordinance is currently less than the Fire Code.
Correct.
Okay.
But the ordinance currently also only allows three units on a private way. So by making those insertions in this section, I think we'll be able to address the fire marshal's concern. I also think that it's going to be, and Becca may be able to speak to this in terms of her familiarity with the real estate market in Sanford. The particular project that caused me to bring this forward had two acres, 2.01 acres. So essentially, what would happen is that under the current ordinance, the only thing we could see would be two units on those 2.1 acres. So you've got, you know, a minimum, you've got a lot size of one acre for one unit. Pretty excessive in the urban zone. What, I pulled 10, as I told you when we were talking about this. It was a little bit of a just pull it out of the air. What was guiding me is the new housing law that says, in your growth area, wherever one single-family home is allowed, you have to allow up to four. So four and four plus the one unit that's on that parcel is what I had in mind when I was putting this forward. But I would be very surprised if you had anybody come in and propose to put 10 single-family homes on those two acres. But even if you did, you know, that, that's not real high density for the urban zone. I suspect what you're going to see happening, and again, I encourage you to talk with Becca about this, is you're likely to see more multifamily structures, whether those are duplexes, tries, or quads, in which case, how is that all that much different than, you know, serving an apartment building in the urban zone already? Except that you need the width. You need the width. I guess what I'm doing is downplaying the Island Ave scenario that he laid out in his memo, because I don't think that's what we're going to end up seeing for most of those. And again, I would encourage you to ask Becca what she thinks the real estate trends are likely to be in Sanford's urban zone for the kinds of parcels we're talking about.
So a question, if you're talking about multifamily units, how many units do you have to have before you trigger the requirement for sprinklers? Isn't there a requirement?
Well, if we, this goes through, you know, I don't know when they stand on their own. But typically, what happens is that Patrick will look at the specific layout of the development proposal, and he needs to have access to, in general, I've heard this, and I could be a bit wrong, and Jamie is also available and knows more about the Fire Code than I do. But typically, what I've heard him saying is that if the buildings aren't sprinkled, he needs to have access to at least three sides of the building. He's also going to be able to make those turning radiuses to get onto the site. I mean, so there are a number of issues that would have to be resolved before anybody could get approval to do this. But I don't know if you want to ask Jamie if he is any more knowledgeable about when the 20-foot width kicks in, or when the requirement to sprinkle a building kicks in.
Well, I guess, Jamie, you've been listening in. Do you have any comments on this?
I do. So our current private way standards allow up to three houses on a, on a private way. Our current private way standards is basically a well-built driveway. So it's almost, in theory, Fire Code and/or building code, you can't be less restrictive. You can only be more restrictive. But the way it's kind of interpreted now is our private ways are basically a well-built driveway. We have a rule in our ordinance that says a driveway can only be shared with up to two houses. So at some point in the past, they came up with this private way standards, which is basically just a well-built driveway. So I believe what Patrick's concerns are, is if we get up to 10 dwelling units, whether that be in one 10-unit multifamily or 10 single families, the potential for disaster gets larger very quickly. And the road would have to be wider to compensate for the traffic coming and going. With a, with a private way slash well-built driveway, it's assumed that you're not going to have two-way traffic multiple times a day. It's assumed that, that people are going to come and go random times like, like you would in a driveway. So I think, I think best idea is okay in putting language in the ordinance that would allow a more rigid review on a case-by-case basis, because I do believe every case is going to be different. We have some private ways that are 75 feet deep. We have some private ways that are 600 foot deep. There's a big difference in what's required as far as getting a fire truck in and out on a 600-foot-deep road than a 75-foot-deep road. So, so I think the, the language that allows the planning board and/or the site plan review committee to basically judge each one on its own merits is, is a great idea. The problem I see with that is the industry, as I'll call it, has voiced concerns over the last decade, that they don't like the gray. They like the, I want to look at the ordinance and know what I want to do. And when we add these, these standards that are movable, the industry doesn't necessarily appreciate that.
So that might be an issue for developers. They might challenge that.
You know, that's always, that's always the, you know, the balancing act that a community has to do. Between black and white rigid standards, you, you know, you have one over the line, you're out of luck. With a more flexible standard, a performance standard, as opposed, remember, we've talked in the past about specification standards, those are the black and whites. And then you have a performance standard that says, this is what we are trying to achieve, which is safe access, as well as efficient use of very valuable land. They don't construct, they don't create new land. You have to take something down if you, if you don't like what's there. And so in general, with flexibility comes greater scrutiny. You have to review the case. You have to review the specific situation, but you end up with, potentially, you end up, and hopefully, you end up with a more responsive regulation that allows you to get the best of the best and reduce the worst of the worst. So if you think about the, the whole philosophy behind the technical manual, the technical manual says if you follow this methodology, you will meet the ordinance standard. You're not required to do that, but we warn you right up front that you will save time if you go that route. And for most developers, time is money. If you think you've got a better idea and you want to pursue it, we're open to reviewing it. Just accept the reality that it's going to take you more time to prepare your submission. It's going to take the city more time to respond to that submission. And so that's the trade-off. In this case, if they don't want, you know, to get an extra seven units, they're welcome to just come in and propose two, or three.
So in the urban zone, is there a lot of open acreage for, what again, 10 units? 10 house lots?
I was actually pretty surprised to see that there was a parcel of this size still available. Again, again, you may want to ask Becca that. She's the real estate person. She knows Sanford inside and out. Typically, you don't find large blocks of area that are open. You find smaller parcels, two maybe being on the upper, upper limit of that, maybe four in some cases. But primarily, these should be looked at as infill opportunities. You know, we, I remember at one point, I was talking with Kylie Mason about how much land is left in the, in the growth areas, which go beyond the urban zone. And she told me, oh gee, that, you know, you're, you're strapped. And I said, what? Look at all the space. And she said, well, but you have very few parcels that are 20 acres or more. Okay? So we don't have a lot of parcels on the big end available for major institutional sightings. You know, in a lot of cases, we're into redevelopment. You're talking about a new fire station. You know, the places they're looking at are places that have had some level of development in the past, and they're going to be doing a redevelopment in the places they're looking at. What you have left that are largely undeveloped at this point are leftover slivers. Typically, that means they're probably the, not the best land. That's why they're left over. But it could be just a chance situation that has occurred based upon how and when properties were developed, that it just kind of left a few left over. And again, if you want to ask Becca that question about how much land you think might fall into this category, remember when we were in the work session, there are only currently 10 approved private ways in the urban zone. So even the one that we were talking about that kind of stimulated this thinking was a glorified driveway. It never went through private way approval. And so in order to develop those two lots to something more than just one unit per acre, there would have to be an actual formal approval of a private way. And actually, we never got to talk about this in the pre-app, Jamie, as to whether they would have to come in and get formal approval even to access those additional two lots.
So private ways, you can only have three house lots?
Currently.
Currently.
Well, let me, let me qualify that. They can only be constructed to private way standards. If they go over it, and we're going to talk about that a bit this evening with the next item on the agenda, you can propose more, but you have to build the road to public road standards. Whether or not you're planning to ask the city council to accept them, whether or not the city council accepts them or not, you still have to construct them to public road standards. And the primary difference, and Matthew can talk about that, and Matthew, if you need a mic, a few, I think there's one there, but you're welcome to come up here.
So this ordinance allow more than three?
Yeah.
On a private way?
It would allow up to 10 if you can meet all of those conditions.
But it says, we may.
You may. That's right.
That's the word, may.
So if you can't adequately meet another one of the standards, whether it's traffic safety, fire safety, septic, you know, you know, sanitary waste disposal.
Site line.
Site lines. I mean, there's all those other standards that are in play as you're looking at a subdivision or a site plan, would have to be met. And what this does is it allows the planning board to let that additional development occur there, but you have to, you have to meet those basic standards. And that third one is the doozy, because that's the one that specifically looks at what's the topography of your site, what else is on the site. that specifically looks at what's the topography of your site, what else is on the site, how much traffic is going to be generated depending upon the number of units you're proposing. That's going to impact the minimum size of the travel lanes, for example. If you're in an area that doesn't have great drainage, you're going to probably have to make drainage improvements. That's going to impact the width of the right-of-way, and that's why we said up to a maximum of 50. And the only reason we put the maximum in there is because in order, excuse me, to pass legal muster. If you're going to waive a numerical standard, we have to provide the range within which you have the authority to waive. So, that's why we said 50 feet.
Just a question, though. I mean, does this put in the planning board in a decision where we're making decisions about fire safety? I mean, we don't want to be doing that.
You're going to do the same thing you do now. You're going to get recommendations from your technical advisors.
So, Patrick Card is still going to be coming?
Patrick is going to be involved in this stuff, you know, at the private way review stage. If there's a subdivision, he's going to be involved in subdivision review. If it ends up triggering site plan review, he's going to be involved.
Even if these two requests that he's put in are taken out, he's still going to be?
Well, he wants them to be hard and fast standards.
Right.
I'm suggesting to you that that may be overkill in some situations, and you can get the same value by putting those provisions in that flexible standard. So, all he has to say is, "Fire code says that you need to have, you know, a 20-foot right-of-way," or "you need to have an 18-foot right-of-way." I just don't know enough about the fire code to know what the increments are associated with the number of units.
I can just ask a question. I don't know the answer to this, obviously, but how far away is a fire hydrant in any private way in Sanford?
I don't know.
1,000 feet, 2,000 feet?
Three.
So, I can answer that. Not every private way is served by public water. In fact, at least as of late, a lot of our private ways are being installed in the rural areas. If, in areas that are served by public water, fire hydrants are typically about that 500 to 600 feet apart or closer. In downtown area, they're like every 300 feet. So, in areas serviced by public water, the 600-foot isn't difficult. What that means is if they build a private way that's, say, 400 feet deep, they would have to install a hydrant at the end of the road type of thing to meet that requirement. So, ultimately, it means they might end up having to install one new hydrant.
And if it's a short private way, you may never hit that 600-foot mark.
Right. The planning board approved one last year off of Main Street, almost in the Shapley, Redwood, Redline, Red?
Redline Properties.
Yeah, thank you. That one was close enough to the existing hydrant that they didn't have to do anything, that there was already a hydrant on Main Street, and that private way was short enough where they didn't have to worry about it.
So, but oftentimes, if you sprinkle the buildings, then Patrick has a bit more discretion about what other kinds of improvements and the standards that will guide those improvements. Jamie, would you say that's fair?
Yes. Sprinkler systems alleviate a lot of other code-required concerns.
But they're not practical without a public water supply, though, to drive them, right?
Well, you're going to hear tonight that they've been directed by site plan review committee to sprinkle the buildings, and they're on private water.
Okay.
And I can speak just a little bit on that, too. 13D residential sprinkler systems actually do not require that much water. There's two methods to achieve it. You can either put a 300, typically case, 300-gallon tank in your basement, or they have new well pumps that provide the flow of water required. So, sprinkler systems are no longer a big deal. They used to be expensive and hard to obtain. The cost of them have come down, and technology has improved. So, residential sprinkler systems are now an everyday occurrence.
Okay.
Okay.
Comments from the rest of the board? Any questions?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chair. I'm a bit confused. I look at Patrick's letter and the proposed changes, and then I hear that he already has the authority to do what he wants us to codify. But the difference is, if we leave it, there's some flexibility?
Please don't misunderstand me. I'm not dismissing Patrick's concerns. What I'm trying to do is address them in a slightly different way than what he has asked for. He's asked for a black and white, all buildings must be sprinkled, there must be a hydrant every 600 feet. What I'm suggesting is put those two provisions about, the planning board may require sprinkling, and they may require additional hydrants, but allow the site-specific review to dictate whether or not those are needed and at what frequency. So, let's say that you've got a 700-foot-long road. Would you go with one hydrant or two? If you leave it a little more open, the way I'm suggesting you do it, you might say two. If you leave it black and white every 600 feet, you're going to get one hydrant. So, actually, I think that the way I'm proposing we address Patrick's concerns, I think will provide greater flexibility for him to ask for more than he might be able to ask for if we get hard and fast. And we can also avoid requiring too much.
And I can clarify one more thing as well. Our current ordinance and/or fire code requirements basically say that if there is a hydrant within 600 feet, you don't have to install a sprinkler system. So, what Patrick is saying is because the roads are going to be narrower and access is going to be limited, that he wants both, not one or the other. Just for clarification.
You all set, Crystal?
This is only for the approved private ways.
And if you have an approved private way, and this flexible provision would still allow you to say, "You've got to increase your right-of-way," because you need to install drainage improvements that were never envisioned as part of the private way approval. So, again, you're offering options to the developer, but they don't get them for free. You know, there's a certain amount of conformance that needs to happen. And again, it allows you this case-by-case analysis. And in some cases, you may say, "Ah, you know, the 16-foot right-of-way is fine. The amount of traffic that's going to be generated is going to create, you know, you're not going to have a lot of conflicts with people going in both directions at the same time. No big deal." In other cases, it may say, "Oh, man, we've got some really funky topography and soil conditions here, and we've got to go above and beyond the basics, just get the water off the road to make sure that it's being managed in a way that it's going to direct the drainage so it doesn't do damage." Actually, it will make staff work a little bit harder here. But in exchange, the developer is probably going to have to work, definitely is going to have to work harder, because for the first point, private ways are not required to be paved. In order to even take advantage of this, you have to pave it, which is a significant cost item if you've got a lengthy private way.
And this is only in the urban zone?
This is only in the urban zone.
No other area?
And the idea is, I think, to kind of, I've got in mind, I'm trying to approach this kind of incrementally, is that we try it in the place that should be best prepared to handle this based upon the zoning designation. That's the urban zone. Once we find out how it works, if we see that there's issues that need to be addressed, we can tinker with it. If we see it's working great, next question might be is, "Do you want to extend it to the residential development zone?" I suspect there are virtually a handful, if any, private ways in the RD zone. You may then want to think about it in the single-family residential zone. But I'm not trying to get ahead of myself here. I just, this is a little bit of an urban design experiment in the urban zone.
All set down on the other end? All set?
Yeah, I agree with the recommendations Beth made to add to it.
Okay.
Fire marshal is going to be there, anyway.
So, he's going to have, he's going to be involved in it, so.
Right.
I'm all set with it, I guess.
Yep.
Everybody else is good?
And we need a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept as Beth has proposed.
Second.
So, this-
We should do an all in favor.
You don't have to do a roll call. So, can I just sort of refine the motion just a little bit? You're recommending that the city council approve the amendment with the two modifications to 238.3. That's 280-16-7. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay. We need to call for an all in favor?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Show of hands, all in favor?
No roll call.
Roll call. 65 hands, all opposed, none?
Great.
Okay. Passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. So, I'll prepare a report to the city council, and we'll move it through that process. And I'll keep you aware when it's going to go to city council and subcommittees, so that you have the opportunity to weigh in. And obviously, I'll also share the reports with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, new business. This is file R25-2B. This is a major subdivision inventory and analysis. This is for a cluster subdivision proposed for the Sam Allen Road. This is on tax map, R25 Lot 2B. This is to create a 14-lot cluster subdivision on property owned by Pierce Excavation and located on a 74-acre lot off Sam Allen Road with plans to further subdivide one of the two larger parcels in the future.
So, I sent you yesterday, and I'm sorry if I forgot to, I just realized. Did I send you a copy of this?
Nope.
Oh, God, I'm sorry.
I forgive you.
Yeah. So, basically, all it said is-
Oh, no, no, you did, the little memo. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, yes. Okay, good. Thank you. Now, I feel-
No need to recap.
Make me feel better. So, the site plan review committee reviewed this application, it's really, this application for inventory and analysis yesterday. Jack was at the meeting. They had a good conversation, I think, with the applicant, and then they made a set of recommendations that were similar to what was in the draft motion in the summary report that I shared with you folks last week. And they do recommend approval, excuse me, they do recommend that the planning board direct the applicant to address the various issues. There were 17 of them as part of preparing their preliminary subdivision application. So, I just want to remind everybody, no decisions get made this evening, except perhaps on the one recommendation that I've made, that I would encourage you to require a hydrogeologic analysis primarily to look at the direction of flow of groundwater from those ponds that were created when the gravel pit that was there dug into the groundwater, and also to evaluate the potential nitrate contamination. Typically, when you look at a residential development, you have a couple of areas of what they call non-point source pollution, meaning that it doesn't come out of a pipe. It just kind of rolls across the ground. The first one is associated with roadway. You know, you get stuff that just gets deposited from the air, as well as stuff that leaks off of cars, tires, oil, that sort of thing. And then, when you have residential development, in addition to nitrates that you would be concerned about from septic systems, you also have the use of fertilizers, the use of pesticides, those kinds of things. In general, you don't get overly nervous about this stuff, but there's a reason that there was a gravel pit on this site. Sand and gravel. I mean, you know, you drop something on the ground, and it's a straight shot into the groundwater. Why there has been so much concern about potential contamination from gravel pits? Well, you know, the humdinger comes when you actually excavate into the groundwater. You have now opened up an area where there is a direct shot into the groundwater. But apart from that issue, and we can certainly discuss that more after Eric makes his presentation and you start getting into your own questions, but beyond that, again, remember, there's no thumbs up, there's no thumbs down. You're just giving direction about the sorts of questions and the information you want them to provide when they come in with preliminary subdivision. It looks like a pretty lengthy list, probably a bit longer than average, but I've seen them this long before and longer. So, not that you did anything badly in your design, but-
Do we have plans that we can put up on the monitor there? Yep, I'm going to run through all of it.
What Eric's going to do now.
Yep. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Well, good evening. For the record, my name is Eric Sari from Altus Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Pierce Excavation. I've got Adam Pierce with me here tonight. He's the property owner. We're looking at a 74-acre piece on Sam Allen Road. It's in the rural residential district. And if you can, oh, it's already up. This is the USGS map. I'm going to zoom in shortly. But the parcel's up here in red. Route 4 is on the left-hand side going down towards North Burwick, which is right on the lower left-hand corner of the screen. So, we zoom in here, give you guys a, whoop, whoop, wrong one. There we go. So, you can see the general shape of the parcel. In the back, we do have the Maryland River traversing the property, going out towards the ocean, obviously, on the right-hand side. We have a little access to Sam Allen Road here. That's where the old gravel pit is accessed from. There's a woods road that does go down through the parcel through there, and it does go all the way to the back. There is also a little tag on Friar's Lane here. That is a private way, but we do have frontage there as well. We look at the aerial. You can see the river here in the back, pretty obvious. This is the gravel pit area. You can see some of the exposed sands there. It's more sand than gravel, actually. There's significant wetland here in the back, and all of this is just beautiful upland. All of the soils on site are excellent. Everything is sand. Even the wetland is sand. It's very rare to find a site like that, and that obviously raises some concerns, which Beth did touch upon. I'll give you guys a little context in terms of the tax map. Here we are. The wells line is right here, maybe one parcel away. So, looking at the plan, let me scroll down here. No, it's here somewhere. Let's do some photos. Let's do some photos first. This is an aerial shot looking towards the airport. The airport's up here. You can see the gravel pit area, as well as the woods road, which is the gravel pit access traversing the site. This is looking in the other direction, down towards the Burwicks. You can see the gravel pit again. Access is right in through here, I believe, right between these two houses. Here's the access right there. Good site distance both directions. This is the woods road going through it. You can see some of the gravel pits starting to revegetate, but it's obviously got exposed sand in a lot of areas. Not a lot of loam down in there. This is Friar's Way, which we'll talk about later. It's a private road. It's gravel. I'm not sure to what standard it was constructed, but it does front upon the parcel, which is right here through the trees. Again, another gravel pit shot. Not a lot of erosion, but some areas are definitely being chewed up by kids and bikes. That's what we'd expect. Woods road going through the site there, and then, of course, more gravel pit. So, let's find the plan. This is the existing conditions. I'll zoom in in certain parts here. We zoom out a little bit more. bit more. You can see over here on the right, and this is all up in the lighter green, these little shaded areas, those are the steep slopes, over 15%. Those are obviously the walls of the gravel pit. You can see those little pockets of wetland here. We believe those were created by overexcavation. Two of them, this one right here and right here, are insignificant vernal pools. They're ephemeral, which means they dry up. Right now, it's totally dry out there. So only in the spring when we have a high water table, they're going to have water in it. Then we've got a big chunk of wetland here, big chunk of upland over here, and of course, the river scooting down through on the right-hand side. As far as the proposal goes, I'm going to zoom in on the front piece here, if I can. Got to get some more room. Okay. Well, you can see the general layout. We're accessing the site from Sam Allen, going down through the, through the gravel pit here, between the wellens. No wetland impacts are required, so there's no state permits in that regard. And up in through the woods into here, we've got 12 single-family house lots. The right-of-way does extend down to Friar's, but we're not proposing a road connection there at this time. And then we've got this lot here, Lot 14, that's reserved for future development. The remainder is 59 acres of open space to be preserved as conservation land. There is the existing woods road that goes through that. That does have a right-of-way with it that will remain. We zoom in a little bit more. That's what I love about this. You don't have to worry about paper plants. You know, you can do any scale you want. It's great. These are generalized conceptual houses, just to give you an idea of what it could look like. Bless you. Obviously, the lot owners, the homeowners, will build what they want, as long as they meet the building setbacks. Red squares are potential septic locations. We have passing test pits on every single lot, as expected, given that we're all dealing with sand here. This lot, you've got some walls of the pit here. We're going to have to bring that up only because I want to smooth out those walls of the pit. I don't want to have a house lot with, you know, gravel pit wall behind you, you know. We do have a quasi hammerhead configuration that we're showing now. The idea being that if and when the future development, Lot 14, is developed, we would have to have access from a second point. In this case, the target is Friar's. We still have to look into, can we legally connect, and what we have to do to make that connection. We believe, at the very least, we're going to have to upgrade that portion of Friar's to town standards. But right now, we're just showing this hammerhead configuration. We may have to put a little hammerhead down here just for turnaround. Fire department was kind of noncommittal on that, so we'll, we'll get their opinion on that as we go forward. As far as the design, for stormwater, obviously with, you know, material this good, we're going to do an infiltration-based system. The beauty of this is we don't see runoff in the model until you hit the 25-year storm. It's, the water just disappears. So when those larger storms, we're going to collect that into infiltration basins that are going to have a filter media on the bottom of it to slow it down, so we don't get that direct straight shot right into the water table. Right now, we're looking at one in here, on this side, as well as one in the back in here. Ran the numbers today. Everything works fine, and I believe you're okay with it. That's it in a nutshell. Really, we're here for questions. I do want to touch upon the hydrogeologic study. We, I think that a nitrate study is definitely warranted here, just because we will have private septic systems here. We will have a homeowners' association. This will stay private unless the city decides to accept the road. So we're going to build at the city's standards, assume that we might stay private for the, for the long term. We're not sure. We can put in that language provisions that prevent or minimize pesticides, septic cleanout, things like that, just to keep the groundwater quality where we need it to be. I think I touched everything. Beth, did I miss anything?
I'd say the only other thing is the Maryland River does feed into Branch Brook, which, excuse me, is the source water for the Kennebunk, Kennebunk Port and Wells Water District. The applicant has shared plans with them, and they have provided a response that they, they're not concerned. And I think that has to do with where their intake is.
Yep. Well, Maryland doesn't hit Branch Brook until way down near the ocean.
So you got a fair way out before you're going to start having impacts.
One thing I did not touch upon was ecology. There are no known endangered species of any kind on the site. There was a species of small reed grass, I think it was called, maybe a mile away. NAPS has to look at it, which we will do. And if it is here, it's only going to be back here along the river. So nowhere near where we're proposing development. IF&amp;W did get back to us. They wanted some photos of the site, so that's in their court right now. But also, they had no hits. So we're clean in that regard as well. So I think I'd entertain questions, if you guys have any.
Okay. I might jump in with one question. Just to verify, this is a private way built to public road standards, is that-
That's the intent, yes. We would love for the city to take it over at some point, but we're not counting on it.
The assumption is it's going to be private, though, for a while?
For a while, yeah. At the very least, for the first year, until we get it finished. And then we'll petition to the city, and if the city doesn't want it, then it stays private. In that case, the homeowners' association will have already been created and be in force.
So would the homeowners' association be in effect if it was, if it became a public road?
If it became a public road, we could do away with the homeowners' association.
As long as there aren't other kinds of maintenance responsibilities that aren't associated with the road.
Yep.
The primary concern is the garbage collection, the plowing, and-
Yeah. Ideally, plowing and garbage collection would be the city for obvious reasons. But if it is an HOA and it stays private, obviously, that's to be private collection and private plowing.
Questions?
My question is in regards to the wetlands that you had mentioned. Is there a plan for any boundary to help preserve that, that you know of?
In terms of like a physical barrier or a sign or something like that? Not at this time, but we're willing to certainly entertain it. There's only little tiny little bits. You can hardly see, these little points right here, right there, that's the only areas that actually are wetland that go along to any of the lots. Everything else is in the open space, which will be deeded. If you think we need something maybe down here and in here, the wetlands that are close, something to signify, hey, it's a wetland, don't mess around in here. You don't dump, don't dump your grass clippings. It's a good example. We're happy to do that. That's easy enough.
My follow-up question is, do you have any concerns of possible flooding? Because I know you mentioned that it only produces water in the springtime if there's heavy rain. But do you worry or have any concerns about it outside of that?
Looking at the test pits and the soils, I have no concerns with flooding at all. There is a small area of flood plain on the site in the back associated with the river, but it's a river. You kind of expect that. But as far as the rest of the development, absolutely not. There's no concern at all. It's rare to get a site with soils like this. I'm pretty stoked, actually.
Do you think if you're looking at a 20-year event or a 50-year event, there's no chance of-
No.
Something-
No, definitely not.
Because you're so close to the water table there.
It's the, the closest pit we had was actually right where you see PG right here, which is, stands for Pit Scrabble. It's a soil designation. Even right there, that close, we still had a water table that was over 40 inches down. That's where they stopped the pit, because they didn't see any water table. So it's, it's deep.
Eric, can you bring up one of the aerials that show the gravel pit?
I can try.
Either an aerial or one of your ground-level views. I just want to point something out to the board. This is, what, what we haven't said is that this pit was excavated prior to the city's regulations, so it never went through any kind of formal review with the planning board.
How old is this pit?
We don't know.
Yeah, we don't know. It predates the applicant's ownership.
Yeah.
It looks like, given the growth, it's been dormant for a long time.
Yeah. I mean, it would be interesting to do a sort of review of historical aerials going back, and there's a bunch of them on the city's website, to see if there's ever a time when we don't see it. But if you look at the pit-
There we go, yeah.
Look, right there, that's perfect. So this has been exposed and abandoned for at least a couple of decades, I would guess.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
You don't see any growth on top of that exposed sand, do you? That is the, that is your message, that if you drop a bucket of water on this site, probably within a minute or two, it's going to be gone. All evidence of it will be gone. So the ground is not holding water. If you look at the soils report, is, it's, a bunch of it, I bet you is, and I didn't get this far into it, but I bet you a bunch of it is excessively drained, meaning, again, it doesn't hold moisture, which then can be used by vegetation.
Yeah. The rumor that, Adam pointed, he heard a rumor that it might have burned. The whole lot might have burned many, many years ago, which took a lot of the organics out of the soil and-
Right.
And sensed some of the issues here. Any area within the lots, we're certainly going to revegetate, just because you kind of want a lawn. So we're going to have to import some loam for that. But that is the intent. Anything that's really egregious, that looks terrible, needs some stabilization, we'll bring some loam into there as well and seed it. There may be some areas beyond that that will remain as is. But, but it is, it is indicative that the soils here are really well draining.
I'm curious what this area would look like during the Patriot State Storm, with all that water that we got.
Yep. My guess is you wouldn't see much. You'd see it probably in the vernal pools only.
And it probably would have been gone within 24 hours if there was any accumulation.
I mean, to not see water in a stormwater model up until the 25-year storm, 25-year storm is a massive amount of water. To not see any in a drainage model is just, to me, I've been doing this for 25 years, it's shocking.
So it's, it's, one of the challenges they're going to have with this project is a landscape plan, because they're going to have to create conditions that will support the growth of vegetation to a point where it can be self-supporting.
The, the good part there is fortunately, Mr. Pierce happens to own a landscaping company. So he's got the experience. I think he can make it happen.
So you, and Jack can probably talk about this a little bit. So we've done some, we've had some of this conversation when we've looked at reclamation plans for gravel pits. And the recognition has been that sometimes you need to put down a small layer of clay underneath the loam to actually hold the water long enough to let the roots suck it up. And so that's something that you're going to have to-
Yep.
-play with, because, again, you want to have that, but at the same time, you don't want to be adding a lot of stuff to the soil that then becomes a contaminant.
Yep.
And so it's, it's a tricky balance. It's doable, but it's a tricky balance.
It's not a challenge, Beth. It's an opportunity.
Say it again?
It's not a challenge. It's an opportunity.
Thank you. I like that. The reason I'm dwelling on this a little bit is because you'll be seeing draft mineral extraction amendments coming forward. And this is sort of an example of what you can expect to have in the community if you don't take care in that reclamation. And the other reason that I wanted you to see this is because this is not an unusual circumstance across Sanford. I keep tripping over old gravel pits. The one that blew my mind is the one that existed underneath the newly expanded area of the Margaret Chase Smith School. Had no idea that was a gravel pit until we were in the middle of that review. And so you will see this situation replicated multiple times, I, I'm predicting, in Sanford, because we have so many old pits that only the old-timers even know about them. This one, I think, is old.
Yeah, it's old.
I got a question, maybe just out of ignorance, because I'm not an engineer, but if you put vegetation over that gravel pit, are you going to be holding more water in there?
If you can get it to catch, yeah.
Is it possible that you could actually be raising the water table if you do that?
No.
Probably not.
Yeah, you wouldn't raise the water table, because the water table's in that sand below the surface anyway.
But see, if you, you looked again at that picture, around the areas that had been excavated, you saw some pretty lush vegetation. You know, so you, over time, in the environment, you end up getting sort of a steady state that create, gets created. And it's fine, and it will continue until you disruptive, disrupt it in a significant way, like with a gravel pit. And then it is incredibly hard to reestablish good vegetative cover. And that's why we've had such a hard time with getting that percent catch that we're looking for, for reclamation in gravel pits. Because, you know, in some cases, you literally have to be out there irrigating it. And, you know, that's a pretty big ask on the, you know, for the industry, because they're not into, they don't do that sort of stuff on a regular basis. For an excavator, or, excuse me, for a landscaper, you know when you're going to have to take that extra care. And in those first couple of years, when you're trying to get the vegetation established, it takes a fair amount of work.
I apologize for having to remove myself for a few minutes.
No worries.
One thing that's, I, I, I'm stuck on is something that was in the packet. And I, like I said, I might have missed this. And it says on page 48 of the packet, "Project entails single-family residential cluster subdivisions on 74-acre parcel. Over 55 acres of open space will be preserved."
That's correct. The real number is actually 59 acres.
59.
Yep. 59.04, to be exact. But it's, yeah, it's, it's going to be preserved. Now, we're not sure of the actual mechanism of that. It may need to be a conservation easement if somebody can find a holder. Could be a deed restriction. It could be a donation. We're not sure yet. But it is not intended to be ever developed again.
Okay. So here's my question. Like the chair said, if the city may decide to take this over, does it stay conservation?
Absolutely. Yeah.
So something I just will point out to you guys. Normally, when you're looking at subdivisions, you go into the subdivision ordinance, and that still is required in terms of processes. But you'll see that the cluster housing provision is in the zoning ordinance. Weirdness. I've never quite figured out why that was that way. But if you re, I encourage you, review that section of the ordinance before they come in with preliminary subdivision. The requirements are very specific. You know, you have to define a building envelope. You have to say where the limits of cleared areas are going to be. You have to provide X percent open space of the total parcel. You have to have protective covenants on that land. Those protective covenants will be on the site, the subdivision plan that will be recorded at the registry, as will any, you know, Word documents associated with those covenants. They have to get them recorded. That's for the protection of the future homeowners. That's for the protection of the developer until they release property. That's for the protection of adjoining property owners, and that's for the protection of the city. So very, very specific provisions in that section of the ordinance.
Can I ask you to bring up that photograph, the last one we were looking at?
Sure.
Please. With the nice vegetation.
All right, I'm trying to-
I should have-
Where'd the little button go? Hold on.
One that Beth wanted to look at. I'm sorry, I didn't even see what page it was on.
Yeah, it's, I'll, I'll find it. There was a button, and I don't know where it went. That's, oh, there we go. Okay. Which, you want the, the aerial, or you want something close up?
Close up, please.
Close up. There's that one, but I think this one, that one's a good one.
You blow that picture up just a little bit.
Yep, right there.
Blueberry bushes.
How many people do you have running through here with ATV, sir? Do you have any idea?
I mean, I've been out there a number of times, and I've seen no one actually out there. I think it's just the surrounding areas.
Any kid with a bike in the neighborhood is going to use it.
Are there any trails back there that you know of?
I believe there are. Yeah, this right-of-way, let me see if I can pull up the aerial. That right-of-way, well, I can show you. Here's the shot with the trail.
Right.
Okay, so that goes all the way through the property. So let me try to find, I don't know if it'll show up in the aerial, but let's see if I can find the dang thing. Ah-ha.
Like a dedicated-
Uh, you can't really see it, but it goes all the way through here. You can sort of see the O-line. And it continues on into, looks like a larger wetland complex in there. I tried to follow it visually. I think it eventually connects to a trailer park way off the map with a couple other little minor intersecting trails, but I didn't walk that far, so I'm not exactly sure. But it does go quite a ways. I mean, it accesses this property here.
That's not a marked trail, though. It's just something that somebody's been-
Yeah, it's, it's a woods road. It's actually really well-maintained. It's surprising. There's a few culverts under it. Someone's cleaned out all the junk in front of the culverts. I mean, it's nicely done. I don't know if that was you, or-
I think that was the other landowner.
The other landowner. I mean, it's, they've taken care of it. But having trails back there is rather nice, I think. People will be able to walk back there, walk their dogs.
That wouldn't be changed at all as part of this development?
No, no. We're only looking at that area up front that was on the plan. So the right-of-way to the abutting property has to stay. They have the right to access it, but it- away to the abutting property has to stay, they have the right to access it, but it doesn't allow for development, from what I understand. And I will verify that.
Have you, by any chance, approached the local ATV club and asked them if they've been maintaining this?
I have not.
You might want to. And/or, I don't think the trails is doing it, but you might want to check with the ATV club.
There is a gate somewhere in there. I want to say it's down in here.
You might find that they're very knowledgeable in different areas of the city. And they may be quite knowledgeable about this area. They could help you out with, you know, where's what, you know, these gates, who's been cleaning out the drainage.
Exactly.
Just a stab in the dark on that one.
Diane, did you say the ATV clubs and the snowmobile clubs, or just the ATV clubs?
Both. Don Rue is the head of the snowmobile club, I believe. And then you have Mr. Leggett, who I believe is the president currently of the ATV club.
Okay. I would think any place, you take a dirt bike, you take a sled. So, makes perfect sense.
It's not that far off the mark from what I've been hearing. Know what I mean? It really isn't off. I see it constantly that they go down through that area. Other people have ATVs. You may get your answers there.
Okay, yeah, we could do that. We'd reach out to them. I will get in touch with you if you have some contact info.
Yeah, Diane, if you could send me the names of those contacts, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
And then I'll, I'll send them on to you.
Thank you.
So if this is a trail, can this be formally recognized as part of this development? Did it exist, or mapped out somewhere, or?
In terms of a public-use trail?
Just the fact that it exists, that it's...
The fact that it exists, yeah, sure. I mean, it's already in public record now, it's on the plan. As far as public use, I don't know. I've got to look at the language.
Because it is private property.
It's private property, that's someone else's right away on someone else's land. So we need to look at that and see how that works.
Do we want that use to continue on a conservation property?
A lot of conservation easements require public access.
Yeah.
Yep.
Although it's still private property.
Well, I'm thinking of the wetlands and everything else. It's a way, he said it went up through.
Sometimes they make distinction between motorized and non-motorized access. But, I mean, again, I would encourage you guys, take a look at the subdivision ordinance. I'm pretty sure that there's language in there about existing trail systems. And again, you can't require that the applicant provide access, but you can require that they provide information about what is happening on the site currently. And oftentimes, you've asked the applicant to work with those various clubs to see if there's a way that things could be adjusted so that use could continue. But you can't require it.
No, we've asked in the past.
That's a physical taking.
We've asked in the past.
Yep.
I can think of a current gravel pit we've asked about. We've had to reroute them, go around.
The CGA site.
Yep.
You know, so it's really a matter of, you know, asking for your support and letting, you know, and your support starting with having conversations. And if there's anything you can do, we encourage you to do it. But it's a form of an encouragement. I just want to be careful, guys, with that one. But I'm pretty sure there's language in the subdivision ordinance, if not in the cluster zoning ordinance, that says if there are trails, then they need to be identified.
They have to be sanctioned trails, though, right? They would actually have to be formal trails, not just trails that are out in the woods?
It's your interpretation. It's vague, which is why you end up with having a conversation. You know, and, and if you have information that's come from the clubs that says, oh, yeah, we, you know, we used to have that, and it was actively used, and over the last five years, people have been shifting their use away from that to this other system. So it's really just kind of an information-sharing process. And then, you know, you do your magic about trying to integrate the development as best you can into the community.
I only ask this question because the last applicant that we talked with about rerouting trails and that informed us, if I'm correct, that it was like a really old trail, and it wasn't even much used anymore. It was just one or two people, you know, that lived in the area. So it wasn't a big deal.
Yeah. This one looks like it gets a little bit more.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we'll, we'll reach out and see what we can find.
Okay.
Probably an old logging trail.
Yeah.
That's where the culverts were put in.
Any other questions from the side of the bench? Tom, Crystal, Gerald, Jack, what's up?
Does the list of issues look reasonable for directing them to respond? I'm going to suggest adding an eighteenth, which is check with the local ATV and snowmobile clubs to see what information they have, raid trails in the area.
Is there a specific list of what the homeowners association is responsible for, or would be responsible for?
We haven't gotten that far yet. We will be submitting draft language, and so we're going to flesh that out in the next few weeks. The real simple ones would be snow plowing, trash, if we have streetlights, maintenance of power, things like that. But I have a mind to restrict pesticides, and also require septic tank pumping every other year, just because of the location.
Yeah, that's a sensitive area.
Yeah.
I guess, is this in the grill zone?
No.
Okay, so this is limited to what's being proposed, for what's...
This is, if I go back, I've got to remind myself. This is in the, if I remember correctly, I think it's the rural residential. Hold on, I just found it.
Yeah.
It's in the rural residential zone, the Branch Brook watershed overlay district and the airport overlay zone. The northeastern portion of the site also includes areas in the shoreland and floodplain zones. So the rural residential district and the rural mixed-use district, if you look at the zoning map, the rural residential is that light green, large area of the community. And then the salmon in the upper right-hand corner is the RMU residential mixed-use district. Those two, if you think about it in the hierarchy of the comp plan and the state's language, those two zones are the rural designations. All of the other zones that you see on there, urban, residential development, single-family residential, industrial business, airport development, and industrial reuse, those are all designated as the city's growth areas.
I just ask because of that new ruling regarding growth area. And that green shaded area on the map, that's for, can I ask about that tonight, or is that going too far? That green shaded area for future development, can I ask about that tonight?
By all means.
Yep. That is, there's a, there's two triggers, once you go beyond 14 lots. One is City of Stanford ordinance that requires a second access. In this case, we've got an idea for it, don't know if we can make it happen or not. The second trigger is DEP. Once you hit 15 lots, you're into a full stormwater permit or a site location permit. So then you have a five-year window, then you can go back and develop these lots. It's ironic how DEP does that. You'd think it would be based on disturbance or impervious area. It's a number of lots, which doesn't make any sense. But it is what it is. The intent, the concept we've got laid out is for the right-of-way to, can you pull up the plan on the screen? Whoever's driving. There we go.
Driver's seat.
I don't get to tell what's up on the big screen, though, that's unfortunate. So we would continue the right-of-way through here, and this would have a little cul-de-sac. You see the curve right in here, so cul-de-sac would be right in here. So we'd have lots off of this. I want to say it was six, seven, seven more lots, I think is what we were able to fit there, in, you know, in using the framework of the subdivision ordinance and the conservation open space ordinance.
And Eric, you may want to zoom out so they can see what happens to that access road.
The existing one, yeah, that continues on over here into the other lot. There's a right-of-way that comes off into this piece, but from what I can tell, there's no path there. But another person does have rights to it. But the trail, you can see it extending all the way through. Let me zoom in on that far-right side.
Will that access road need to be built to public way standards as well, or?
The trail, no. No, it's just going to stay as it is. This section through the middle here will stay. Obviously, if future development is ever done here, that would get folded into the right-of-way, the roadway right-of-way. But the trail would still have access right off the end of the cul-de-sac.
Can I ask a question about Friar's Way?
Mm-hmm.
Pull up your image. There you go. You're not proposing connecting right now. Can you explain a little bit about why you're holding off on that?
Two reasons. One is that we don't need to, because we haven't hit that threshold for a second access. The other is we need to figure out if we need to rebuild it, or if we can access it at all, because it's a private road. My guess is we do have the rights to go over that road, because we have frontage on it. Why would the town require the abutting subdivision to extend a right-of-way to this piece of property if we didn't have rights to it? Doesn't make any sense. But we need to look into that and figure out what kind of legal aspects are touching upon that. So that's it, in a nutshell. It doesn't, it's not necessary for the development as presented now with 14 lots.
I'm going to remind you, remember when we were looking at Spencer's Way? There's a provision in the subdivision ordinance that you just reminded me of, is that when you've, that you need to show how you're going to interconnect to other adjacent properties that could potentially develop in a similar pattern to what's being proposed. And so that would accomplish this, whether or not it's used.
So you won't end up in a landlocked parcel, or something?
Well, it's not just that, it's that you don't want to end up with all of these stubby little cul-de-sacs, and none of the roads interconnect. You know, so Sanford's, I'm assuming Sanford's vision in adopting that provision is that they're looking for an integrated development pattern. So, you know, it's, it's much easier to serve if those roads ultimately become public roads. Just think about school buses going down one cul-de-sac, and then another 400, 500 feet to one side, having to go down another cul-de-sac. I mean, it makes for very, very inefficient delivery of public services.
The kids would just get dizzy going round and round, yeah.
Of course, you can make the kids walk to school, and then, you know, meet their phys ed requirements. Sorry.
I have a quick question. Can you hear me, or do I need to...
I can hear you.
Okay. Well, for the first, I guess, four lots, it looks like 12, nine, one, and two.
These guys, right there.
Will, do you anticipate any landscaping restrictions due to the, I guess, like, lack of soil?
As far as restrictions within the HOA, we're not there yet, we're not really sure. I mean, HOA can cover everything from how many garages you have to the color of your house, we can put anything in there. Right now, as far as landscaping, we're looking at street trees. As far as landscaping the lots, I don't think we want to go there, because someone's going to own it. And if they don't like the landscaping, they're just going to pull it out. So it's one of those things, how far do you take it? In the quasi-public realm, if this becomes a, you know, a city street or if it stays a private way, the street trees are what everyone's going to see.
I guess, Crystal, were you asking that less from the perspective of...
Correct.
We want you to require landscaping than...
As like the possibility of...
Are you, are you looking more for screening, like these lots won't be able to look into the remnants of the gravel pit?
Yeah.
Okay. I, we can certainly look at that. I mean, that's planning of...
It's more curiosity than...
Yeah, I think we can certainly look at that, you know, a few trees in here and down in here.
I just imagine someone having a mound of dirt in their front yard.
Yeah, it's certainly something we can look at. I mean, that's planting some trees, as long as it's done correctly, and it's the right species, it should survive. So yeah, we can look at that.
I was thinking you were going in the other direction about, because you see the wetland is also pretty close there.
Well, actually, it was actually both.
Not wanting the disturbance.
So you have like two extremes. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's actually, the first question I asked that Beth was, in regards to the restriction, if there's going to be anything posted, so that kind of piggybacks off of that.
Yeah.
All these houses are going to have lawns, though.
I would assume so. Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we good? Any other questions or comments, or anything you'd like to see, or?
I'm assuming you're going to use LEDs.
Oh, absolutely.
Apt and shielded, I saw that.
Yeah, we're not sure exactly where we're going to put them yet. At the very least, probably one right at the intersection with Sam Allen, one at the internal intersection, and maybe one or two along the main stem of the road, just to, you know, give a little bit of light. We don't want to light it up like downtown, but we want something in there, just for, for safety.
Yeah. How far are you away from looking at this, Matt? How far are you away from the road to the abutter on the left?
The, looking at this guy right here?
Mr. Herbert A.
Okay, the, the...
Let me pronounce his last name.
As far as the new lot?
Yeah.
This distance, oh geez, hundreds of feet. It's deceiving at this scale.
What about the road coming in?
It goes right, right down next to them, because that's our only access. That's where the existing road comes in.
Just wondering if we could ask that a light be put a little further away from this house?
I mean, if we don't want a light at the intersection of Sam Allen, that's, that's fine with us.
No, it's Sam Allen. I would assume yes, but...
Yeah. I wouldn't put one, looking at, I wouldn't put one down in here, traveling through the old pit area. I don't think that's needed. I think you'd want it up in the house areas, where people are going to live. I don't think you need one in here at all. I think that's, it doesn't do anybody any good. We have headlights for a reason.
So I should point out, and I don't think it made it into the comments, that Deputy Police Chief specifically asked for street lighting, the full length of the proposed road. Now, he wasn't necessarily asking for it to be overlit, but he wanted to make sure that there was going to be enough lighting there that it would be safe. And so we did have a short conversation about, you know, capping, shielding, directing downward, keeping the light on the property. And so I'm going to, I'm going to add 19 in there and just say, if it's okay with you, show street lighting plans.
When you say the full length of the road, you're talking about the area where the houses are?
Full length of the road, I want to say 1,200, to get to the back there, to the T. That's, that's me shooting from the hip, though, just from designing it. So I'd have to go back and verify that. But that rings a bell.
I guess it's not, so full length of the road is not the area that Diane was talking about, though. That's the...
I was concerned about the neighbor having a light shining through their property all night long.
Yeah, no, I'm with you on that.
And I'm assuming that they're more likely to be of a pedestrian scale.
Yeah, we don't need 40-foot-high Walmart-style poles, definitely not.
I'm good, Diane. If you don't have anything else, I think we've got enough to go with.
Yep, whenever you're ready. As long as you're okay with 17, I added 18 about the trail groups, and 19 about showing a street lighting plan. And capping, shielding, directing downward, care with impact on abutters near access road.
We'll get another look at this anyway.
You're going to see this at least two more times. It's a major subdivision.
Do you know what the timeline is for this?
Design is, we're getting there. I'm going on vacation on Friday, so that's going to slow things down. We're probably going to submit sometime in August. So maybe an August meeting or September.
Sure.
Do you have any idea what type of houses that you're thinking of building? What, is it ranch, is it colonial, federal?
Adam's not going to build the houses. These are going to be for sale to builders. But as I said before, in HOA docs, we can make restrictions, so we can make a minimum house size, for example. So definitely no trailers, you know, things of that nature. I would assume, you know, doing this a lot, we're probably going to have your standard colonial-style home. Two floors with a garage. Some of these have, are perfect for drive-unders.
So no modulars, stick-wheel houses?
No, no modulars, no.
Okay.
What do we need to do here?
So Eric, watch for a letter.
Okay.
Realistically, it's a wild week without Jan in the office. So realistically, it's probably going to go out early next week.
Okay. I won't be here anyway, so.
And, and just, you know, stay in touch in terms of the submissions, if you have any questions.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Good, thanks.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Good night. Okay. Next item that was listed on our agenda is going to stay on the table, because I think we're still waiting for some more. I think we're still waiting for some more.
Yeah, we're still waiting for the revised submissions.
Okay.
I did have contact with the consultant. I'm going to guesstimate between three and four weeks ago telling me that he expected to make submission within a week or two. He's late, not outrageously late.
This is for the project on Tebets Avenue? Okay. All right. So that brings us to other business, the planning directors of Quora.
Okay, a fair amount of stuff. So the first one is that this is our first in-person meeting for a little over two and a, almost two and a quarter, two and a half years. I, I'd like to ask you how you think it went. Any suggestions you might have for improvements? I will have nameplates for you by the next meeting. I know I've got them. We ordered them for, you know, folks we didn't have them for, and I just don't know where Jan stashed them. They were supposed to be in that box.
The, the election or the, the in-voting on the third floor here. So who knows where they went?
No, no. She specifically looked for them and had them in hand before she left on vacation. And they just didn't end up where I was expecting them to go. And so I shook down her, her desk today, but I couldn't find them.
Suggest she look for the unusual spots.
Well, there's that. But anyway, you know, and feel free to offer those comments now. Feel free to just email me. You know, we're going to be working this for the next couple of meetings until I think we're all back into a, a pretty comfortable place. You know, we're all kind of sorting, trying to figure out how we deal with laptops with the various power outlets here with regard to the, the, you know, the, you know, the little monitors that are here. I'm going to be sitting down there at some point and, and maybe manipulating some of this stuff. I'm hoping Ben's going to be with us for a good, long time. So that was my first thing. The second thing is, last Thursday, Jack and Jamie and I and Stacy from HR conducted interviews for the planner's position. And we made, we made a selection. We made an offer. And I have been told that the offer has been accepted. I can't release name or any, or even the start, the starting date, but we're looking at the new person coming on in early August. He has a considerable amount of experience. And so I think we're all hoping he's going to hit the road running.
So he's a planner?
He's a planner. And then the other thing I wanted, I know there's a fourth thing and I can't remember it, but the third thing I wanted to make you aware of is that the Mineral Extraction Task Force had its last meeting last Wednesday. There'll be, I, I've already gone through and made yet another set of revisions based upon that feedback. I, before I pass it on to the manager for posting, I have asked Jamie to take a step back now that we've got a, a new and completely revised document just to read through it to make sure that the language works, not the policy direction, but the language. And I'm hoping to have that information back from him relatively soon. The manager will be bringing this forward to the city council at its July 19th meeting. It's not clear exactly what the council will do with it at that point. They could say, "Thank you very much, Mineral Extraction Task Force. You've done your job. And now we're going to move it through our normal process, which is to send it to the planning board, for the planning board to work on." The, there are two parts of, or they may decide that they're going to do some work on it themselves before they pass it on. You know, I, it will be pretty complicated for them to do that because between the two ordinance amendments, one for Chapter 280 and one for Chapter 149 licensing, we're looking at 25, 26 pages of text. One more thing. And I am anticipating that we're going, that you guys are going to have one to three workshops on it. It's detailed. It's, it's virtually a complete rewrite. What, the basic thrust of it is that in exchange for the new permit every five years, you would get one permit unless you decide you want to make some significant amendments or you decide you only want to propose it a phase at a time. And then you would go to, the industry would go to an annual licensing requirement. And at that licensing, as with any other licensing, there is a requirement for an inspection. So there would be a minimum of one inspection per year. If there are significant areas of non-compliance that can't be readily, then that will hold up the license. If it can't happen or we have a non-responsive property owner, operator, the council can revoke the license.
Council?
So, the council. So, because licenses are always go through the council. That's the way we do it in Sanford. So the one thing I would say is that there's a lot more specificity in the ordinance that's proposed for 280. That was at the request of the industry. And then we sometimes got pushback that we were, "Why are you being so specific?" Well, that's what you asked us to do. So there's this back-and-forth tension. What else, Jack? Should we tell them? Oh, you won't be reviewing and commenting on Chapter 149. That's entirely within the, the oversight of the council. The zoning ordinance, you are required, they are required to ask you for comment. I am going to share both of those documents with you only so that you understand the other half of the coin, the other side of the coin. You know, not going to be looking for you to make comments on it, but I want you to understand what the other part of it is going to do to help generate some sense of where you fit into the process and to get you comfortable with the trade-off, the basic trade-off of going from a five-year permit to a, and so in some cases, like with Gorm Sand and Gravel, they've got 120-odd acre parcel, excuse me, lot. And, you know, so they are likely, because they've done a lot of work, they're likely to come in and ask for approval on the whole 125 acres. In other cases, we've got really small mom-and-pop operations on very small properties. They may do the same. Then you've got some small mom-and-pop operations on larger properties. They may choose to come in a couple of times because it's, it's going to be expensive to prepare the applications. But at least in this case, you would prepare it once. So just be forewarned, this is going to be tough work. If all goes well, I'm hoping council will pass this on to you quickly so that you can start doing your work. And then eventually, as with all zoning ordinances, you'll make a recommendation. It'll go back to council. And then council will work it through its subcommittee process, hold public hearing, first reading and second reading, and hopefully action. This has been a long haul.
We'll hold a public meeting too, right?
You'll have a public hearing as well.
Yep. They were not impressed with the first figure that was shown out for the annual licensing fee.
That's going to be a, you'll see when the document comes to you, they may have already dealt with that. They may not have. But you'll see that it's a fairly significant application fee, proposed just about $9,600 for the first year, dropping it by $3,000 in succeeding years after that. And that's because doing the initial drone flyovers and then the analysis that goes on with it, you know, it's not the zone, it's not the drone time. It's the fact that they then take all that data back to the office and they have to register it so that they know what the elevations are. And there's a, there's, you know, I would say probably from my own consulting days doing work, they're probably looking at eight to 12 hours of work on each of those projects initially. And then, then the succeeding years, you then compare it to what you had. And then that becomes significantly less burdensome and therefore less expensive. Council may decide to knock those numbers down. You know, there's, there's a hefty contingency in there. There's a recovery cost for certain staff time to amend ordinances and then get them recodified, which is not a big amount. There's a small piece in there for buying equipment. There's a small piece in there for the clerks' time and our inspection team time for the limited amount of work that they're going to do inspections, particularly providing oversight on the consultant that we, we've hired to do our third-party inspections. But, you know, we decided at the task force, fundamentally, this is a political decision and it rests with the city council. And so we gave them the background on how we came up with the numbers. And basically, that's going into Steve's hands to work directly with the, the council on that matter. But what's really important is for you to understand the interplay between the approved plan, the performance of the operator, and then the licensing that happens on an annual basis. Okay? So buckle on your work belt and be prepared. I have read this document probably a good dozen times at this point. And it's, it is tough to keep focused on it as you're reading it through. Sometimes I think it's better to read it in pieces so you can be real focused. But ultimately, I have to read it as a whole, finally, when we get to the end point to make sure that, you know, we've closed loops and haven't left gaps and haven't created conflicts. So I am fully expecting that this revision, this last revision that I did, we're probably another two or three revisions away before we end up with whatever it is the council adopts.
How many pages are you looking at right now?
The last time I looked at it, there were 20 pages in the Chapter 280. Now, remember, that includes sections or strikeouts.
Yeah.
But I would say probably 20 pages, between 20 and 25 pages is a reasonable estimate, just looking at the number of definitions we've added. You know, I think the definitions are now three and a half pages worth of amended definitions or new definitions. It's pretty technical, you know, and we'll get into, you know, as we start it the first time, you know, Jack and I will end up giving you some reasonable background of how we got here. And it was, it was a pretty good process. It was grueling. But it was a pretty good process.
They kind of base this off of Augusta's.
Well, they, we used two primary, three primary documents. Sanford's.
Yeah.
Augusta's, which has a freestanding mineral extraction ordinance, and then the DEP's regulations around mineral extraction. And so we started out with a 20-page table comparing, you know, identifying an issue, what we say in Sanford's ordinance currently, what Augusta says, what DEP says, you know. And, you know, part of the reason it was so lengthy is because, just because of the formatting, you know. Unless you wanted to put it in eight-point font, you know, to fit it into columns and to get it on a legal-sized sheet, it was, it was, it was a little challenging initially. But we, we did it. And I think it's not bad. I think it's not bad. Jack, what, what's your reaction?
We'll see what Mr. Mark gets all the other pits riled up about.
Yep. So we had two industry reps on the task force, Mark Curtis from Gorm Sand and Gravel and Chris Janest from Janest Concrete. Jack was on there from the planning board. Dave Parent, Matt Hill, Jamie Cole, Steve and me from the city side. And Steve was the chair. And actually, Dave Parent's not the city side. He's the water district. And then we had, oh, help. We had a resident near one of the pits, and unfortunately, he dropped off kind of quickly after.
He just came to complain.
Yeah. Well, you know, his major concerns were noise and hours and rumblings and, and, you know.
He lived by the Falls Agway pit, right?
I think so, yeah. And.
Dana?
And then Dana Peterson, who represented sort of the water quality concerns. And then, I'm forgetting who our land trust person was, Kevin.
Oh, Kevin McKeon.
Kevin McKeon from Land Trust. And I think that was the group. So just stay tuned. You know, I, I think this is going to take a little bit of time. And, and I've already told the manager I'm looking at one to three work sessions before you can even go to public hearing. And then you may end up wanting to do some work sessions after that, depending upon the kind of comments you get at the public hearing stage. And then, guess what? Every single pit has to go back through the review process under the new ordinance before they can then move into the annual licensing process.
So every pit has to come before the planning board one more time?
One more time.
And will they be inspected before?
Inspection, if we don't have to do it.
Well, that typically, we include some discussion of areas of non-compliance in the reports when you start looking at an application. So, yeah, Jamie will probably. And in some of those cases, remember, we've already got, I think it's three of the pits under the third-party inspection process. And there's six pits, I think, with the possibility of a seventh one that is non-active.
Is Jamie still on? Is Jamie still on?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're still in formal meeting.
The only reason I ask is that it wasn't Tuesday night. It was two weeks ago. The town, the, the manager's talking about something called LiDAR technology.
Yep.
How's that going to play in?
That's the drone.
Well, they, they take advantage of that. Yep.
Okay. So, yeah, I wanted to ask some questions about that.
Well, that's kind of how they come up with the floodplain maps.
Yeah.
Noah uses that when they're doing some of their charting for navigation in coastal areas.
Yep.
So may you just use it to go upwards, check places.
Okay. I think that's pretty much what I have to say. There's going to be a lot of, you know, kerfuffle going on in the planning office over the next several weeks as we try to prepare for our new planner.
Where are you going to put them?
Well, where Molly used to be. But we need to do some reorganizing.
So our conference room is like null and void now?
The conference room is gone.
All right.
So I guess I will add this since two of you are on the design review committee. We're going to do the next meeting virtually. We're going to do a Zoom meeting. And we're going to have some conversations with the group about whether or not you want to go to in-person. You're not required to. And there will be some logistical issues. I think we're probably going to end up meeting here, which means that I have to make sure that the room's available to us.
So the conference center and the manager's office is not available?
Well, I'm, I'm not going there yet.
What about, there's a conference room down at the airport?
There's also a conference room in the school department. There's also a conference room over at the police department. So we've got options. It's just that I, I'd like to, you know, if we can keep it in City Hall, it's a bit less complicated for me because, you know, I have to go in and out. But whatever it is, we'll end up coping with it and.
Conference room right there?
Yeah.
There, there is that conference room there. The question is, we can't, whether we can set it up for Zoom. And we may be able to because we still have to offer, you know, the Zoom option if we're not going to be in chambers. Even if we're doing it in person, we offer a Zoom option for anybody who wants to testify. And in some cases, that includes the applicants. The committee members are expected to be there unless there's an extraordinary situation. You know, I'm out of town this week on a business trip. So I sent you all out the policy, the city council policy and a. So I sent you all out the policy, the city council policy, and I do encourage you to read it. It provides some pretty good guidance.
So let's say if I go to Canada, am I still required to Zoom in?
Technically, if you're out because of a vacation, I'm pretty sure that you're not supposed, you're supposed to miss the meeting. If you're up there on an emergency health issue, I think that's a different circumstance. But again, read the language of the policy, and then if you have any specific questions, let me know and we'll get the answers for you.
Probably won't get fired, Diane.
No, I'm just saying, it's like I'm trying to go back up, you know.
So that's pretty much what I, what I had to say. I know there was something else, but I can't remember what it is. So just keep your, I did send you, oh, yeah, I do remember what the last thing was. So I told you that at SMPDC's annual meeting, they were going to have a presentation from Natalie Burns, their attorney, about what LD 2003 said and didn't say. And then there was a question-and-answer period. Unfortunately, they went long, and I had a hard stop, and so I only heard one or two of the questions and answers. What I did today is I emailed all of you a link to a recording of that session plus the display material that Natalie put up. She sliced and diced that law, you know, every which way till Sunday. Very concise, you know, this is what it says, this is what it doesn't say, this is blah, 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 blah. And so if you're interested, I sent that to you just this afternoon. I didn't send it to your private emails, I just sent it to your city emails. Feel free to look at it, raise any questions. SMPDC is setting up its own housing subgroup to work on this because there's still an enormous amount of ambiguity in the language. And so I am on that group, working with, I think there are two other municipal planners plus two planners from SMPDC who'll be, at least two, who'll be working on it. And we're looking at trying to understand, ask clarifying questions. And I think the last time there was a conversation, email conversation, there was also a suggestion that we might want to put together some recommended statutory amendments to go in for the next session. Okay, so anyway, I'm done, I'll stop babbling.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Why have we got a tree growing on the top of a mill building off of Heritage Cross?
Are you thinking about the tree inside the stack?
No, I'm talking about the tree on top of the International Woolen Building.
There's a tree on top on International Woolen now?
It's like some kind of branch thing. I saw it about five days ago. If you're coming down Heritage Crossing, going towards I Street.
Yep.
You know where the overhang is that I'm worried about collapsing?
Yep.
It's before that.
Okay.
Look up, way up.
Maybe they can decorate it for Christmas.
By the way, we're doing a pre-app on Stanton within a couple of weeks.
That's nice.
Nice. Any communication from anybody else before we adjourn?
That was my communication.
Sorry, that's all right.
I do have one thing to say. If you guys could give me like some leeway, I'm having some health problems. And I need to get through 35 years of smoking because I stopped smoking. Okay, so I gotta, you're going to hear a lot of hacking and whacking for a while.
Oh, boy.
Okay, so if you could give me some leeway, I appreciate it, thank you.
Good for you.
I had to.
Okay, who had the motion?
Me.
Second it.
Second, okay, I'm all in favor of adjournment? Not opposed?
Go call.
Five to zero, adjourned.
Meeting officially adjourned.